House.
Okay, I will now call back to order.
Yes, thank you. Yes, they're going to come safely. I will now call back to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission meeting of April 9th, 2025. Please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. We'll proceed to public hearings, starting with ordinances, item P-32.
Item P-32 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 9th, 2025.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Denise Hernandez, Code Compliance Department. Item P-32 is CC-250005. It's an ordinance by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, providing for the amendment of Chapter 42 of the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, providing for modification, repealer, severability, inclusion into the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, and an effective date. So this is an amendment to Chapter 42. Chapter 42 establishes and defines the minimum standards for the proper care and maintenance of lands to preserve the public health, safety, and welfare. So the proposed amendment before you expands the list of parties that may report violations related to stagnant or foul water, and it also clarifies that the definition of stagnant or foul water includes swimming pools that have not been properly maintained. Because this is a code of ordinances change, this is one public hearing, so we're asking that you accept public comment on these amendments, adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 42 of the Pasco County Code of Ordinances by roll call vote, and authorize the execution of the ordinance by the chairman. Direct board records to transmit the ordinance to the Department of State by electronic mail. And I'm here for any questions.
Board members, do we have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Mariano.
I'm glad to see you coming forward, because I always thought pools were in there, because I know we've had some of them addressed in the past, but I guess this is qualified to be able to handle it.
Yeah. And they're considered a public nuisance, so it should be this way.
And that'll help with our mosquito problem.
Yes, indeed.
Is there anyone in the public that wishes to speak against this item? Is there anyone online?
Madam Chair, I do not have a sign-in sheet.
That's this guy right here, right?
Nope, that is the WebEx sheet. Should I just sign up?
Unless I grabbed it, but no, it's not here.
Okay.
So no one signed up?
I told no one to sign up.
All right, so this is a roll call vote?
Just one moment.
Move approval.
We do have one, one, one moment, please. We did have one person signed up. I don't know if they're in WebEx. Tori Baker, are they logged in WebEx?
He did not specify what he wanted to speak on, so that's going to be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
If, tell you what, if he signs on, give her a signal, because he didn't sign up.
We have communications, so just let me know on WebEx, and I'm good.
Move approval. Second.
Roll call vote.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 3, Chairman Starkey.
Aye.
Thank you.
P-33.
Item P-33 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 5th, 2025, and affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nick Tarnas, PTOs, Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department. Item P-33 is PDE-250078. This is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use maps 2-15 and Sheet 01, changing from RES 3 residential 3 dwellings per gross acre, RES 6 residential 6 dwellings per gross acre, and RES 9 residential 9 dwellings per gross acre to IL industrial light on approximately 7.93 acres of real property located north of Coomer Road, south of State Road 575, east of Pine Products Road, and west of Bauer Road. This comes to you with a recommendation from the Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department and the local planning agency to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and adopt the ordinance by roll call vote, and there's a presentation of so desired.
Board members, does anyone want to see a presentation?
No.
Madam Chair, just confirm. We have live local provision on here.
Yes, sir.
That's going to matter for...
While we still can. All right, thank you, Terry.
Okay. Would anyone in the public like to speak against P-33? And we have no one online?
I've not been informed, so you know what's on there.
Okay, then I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, it's a roll call vote.
District 1, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 4, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 3, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. All right, P-34.
Item P-34 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February 5th, 2025. The item was continued from March 25th, 2025, BCC meeting to today.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Patrick Dutter, Planning, Development, Economic Growth. This is the much awaited ADU ordinance. So reading the title here, "An Ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners Amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Section 503 AC Agricultural District, Section 504 AC-1 Agricultural District, Section 505 AR Agricultural District, Section 506 AR1 Agricultural Residential District, Section 507 AR5 Agricultural Residential District, Section 509 ER Estate Residential District, Section 510 ER2 Estate Residential District, Section 512 R1MH Single Family Mobile Home District, Section 514 R1 Rural Density Residential District, Section 515 R2 Low Density Residential District, Section 516 R3 Medium Density Residential District, Section 517 R4 High Density Residential District, Section 530.3 Construction Accessory Buildings and Structures, Creating New Section 530.24 Accessory Dwelling Units, Appendix A Definitions and Other Sections as Necessary for Internal Consistency, Providing for Replicability, Repealer, Providing for Severability, Inclusion at the Land Development Code, and an Effective Date." So if you recall, I think a month ago, we had some conversation about the proposed ADU language, and we had, I think, some very good dialogue, and so we have some updates based off of that dialogue and some things that we've changed in the code since then. But first, before I do that, there is an update for ADUs on the state level. So legislation is making its way through the House, both the House and Senate for ADUs. The intention is to require local governments to adopt an ordinance to permit ADUs for affordable housing. Depending on the legislation that gets adopted, we may, in the not-so-distant future, have to come back and amend our code, so we'll see what happens there. It's House Bill 247 and Senate Bill 184, so just to have that on your radar.
Well, in effect, ADUs are affordable housing, so what's the difference?
I don't know the specifics of the language, but I think we just got to keep an eye out to see if it affects anything.
We have to monitor the rent, the income level?
Yeah, this is just to monitor, in case there's a nuance, but we're not anticipating any issues with it right now. Ralph, I don't believe so. He's shaking his head.
Well, they should be happy we're doing an ADU ordinance.
Right.
Okay?
Okay. So some discussion points from our last meeting. So one, is there potential for larger ADUs on larger lots? So staff response to that is for the board to consider permitting parcels with one acre more of land to have an ADU up to 1,200 square feet. Note, this can still be exceeded with the approval of a special exception. So I think, right, there was a conversation about potentially larger lots, should get larger ADUs, and trying to meet in the middle there, so that's a proposed solution.
Is, or do you want us to discuss this now or when you're done?
You can discuss now if you'd like.
Okay, well, I would be against that.
Madam Chair?
That's a house, not an ADU.
Okay.
That's not an accessory, yes.
Did everyone see the copy of the email from Grover Flack Designs? I think he sent it out to everybody, no?
When?
Within last week. Could you put it up, Tony? I'll read you the email. He's a designer. He says, "I've designed a new home for my niece, her husband, in which they put it up for permitting. However, I didn't realize that Pasco County didn't currently have an ordinance for accessory dwelling units. After speaking with someone from zoning, I understand the commission is currently reviewing considering a new ordinance for accessory dwelling units. I've attached the current ordinance from Hernando County for accessory dwelling units that has been in place since 2012." I didn't even know they had one.
Hernando?
Hernando. "I hope you can take consideration of Hernando County ordinance the way it's written and can adopt some language. In particular, I'd like to see the following from Hernando County's ordinance. An accessory dwelling unit shall be subordinate to the primary structure such that the maximum gross habitable floor area of the accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed 50% of the gross habitable floor area of the primary dwelling unit." So you won't have like a small house and a big house type thing. "With the 50% rule in lieu of having a maximum set gross habitable floor space, the designs of the ADU can then have better layouts. No matter how big of a home the owners would want, the ADU cannot be any larger than what the size of the lot can allow with all the setbacks." He attached some briefings with it, but, for instance, this one here that he sent over, it has an area of, the house has a floor area of 2,511 feet, and the ADU has 1,240 feet. It fits the thing. It's at 49.4%. It's been tried and tested for 13 years out there. It's worked pretty well. And again, he thought we had one, so he had to kind of take a step back. But this, I think, does what we're trying to do, and it fits in line with what would probably work better coming from engineer, designer.
Well, I, to me, that's a house. That's a three-bedroom house. I don't think that's what our intent is. It's, for me, it's too big, but I will, is this our first or second reading?
Second.
Second.
Okay. I just put some texts out to people who are more knowledgeable than me, but I've never, I've not heard of that as an, that size, as an accessory dwelling unit. I think it's too big. And then you're going to start having kids, and you're going to, then you're going to start having a lot more cars, and then you're going to have school impacts, because you're going to have a three-bedroom house, and where are all those cars going to park? So I, I personally am against that.
Well, they're on an acre. Remember, they're not in a 45-foot lot.
So they can park all over the grass in the front, the front yard?
They have apartment back door. They can park wherever. They have, this won't be...
Well, you're thinking it's a one-acre in a rural area, but what if it's a one-acre in an MPUD?
Where do we have this?
Well, we have it in Starkey Ranch. It's in Aristida. We have half acre to three acre.
So your CDD, would the CDD allow it?
We're allowed to have an accessory building, but it can't have a kitchen in it because of the county codes. I mean, that could change now.
So Patrick, would the CDD's rules override?
It's not CDD, it's HOA.
Now, CDD doesn't have land use authority, so they wouldn't have that at all. HOA documents might, but CDDs don't control footprint of houses.
Oh, and it's covered by Longway.
So I just texted Frank, who's a national expert on all this stuff. I would not put a minimum on it, but if you need a maximum, I would put it at 800 feet. Some places go up to 1,200, like Hernando did, but that can be a two-bedroom or even three-bedroom, which becomes a house. Fayetteville allows an ADU that is detached, plus an ADU that is part of the main house and combined. They cannot exceed 1,200 feet, but you can have one of them, but you can have one of them be 1,200 feet. I don't really understand that one, but I agree, 1,200 feet is a house.
You say, what'd he say about 1,200 feet?
So he just said that he's talking to his text, and so that last sentence didn't make sense. But, so don't put a minimum on it, but I would put a maximum of 800 feet.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. We can keep going, or if you want to keep discussing this, it's your choice.
I'll let him roll.
Weren't we talking about a 900 square feet at one time?
Oh, yeah, I think I said 900 last time, so I'd go to 900.
Yeah, I think I'd be right.
But no, no more.
But with the special, if they want 1,200, they can apply for special conditions, right?
A special exception, they can exceed that, yes.
I'd be okay with that, because maybe you have a really big lot.
I mean, if I get a, if I get a big lot and a big house, and again, if a designer says it fits better, do that, I'll leave it to them. I mean, between 900 and 1,200 feet, I mean, if the house is big enough, so be it. Let it go. It's not going to break, it's not a dramatic thing of like, maybe there's another bike that's coming or something, but if it's simple, it's easy, let them go do it. Why make them do this special exception, Ralph? Just keep it in one thing, and it's worked for 12 years. We didn't even know they had it up there.
Well, you know, they don't have, I mean, 1,200 feet is another house, and I don't agree with putting that in someone's backyard in a neighborhood and adding potentially three cars. If it's, at 1,200 feet, it's going to be a three-bedroom house. You're going to have two teenagers and two adults, so you're adding four more cars to a lot with the house in it already, if they're renting it out to a family. The idea, the idea is, is it's either a place for a college kid, or you rent out one bedroom. This is how it works in Longleaf. We have some divorced dads who have rented them. Some of our county attorneys have rented them, because they've kept their homes in other areas. Or you have a kid that just got out of college and wants to live in a neighborhood that he normally couldn't afford, and that's the idea of an ADU. It isn't to take a lot subdivided so you and your family are all living together on the same lot. Or you're, or bring in your mom and dad who need to be closer to you. It's not meant to bring in a family in your backyard.
I'm going to say that if you look at, let's say a family's got a big house, et cetera, they want to move out, but they don't really want to move out. And, you know, both my parents are living in 1,200 square foot condominiums. They're two-bedroom, they're two-bath, they're not that big, they're not three-bedroom, they couldn't be a three-bedroom, unless you really wanted to take away the side room and you have everybody in one small room. So I think 1,200 is a reasonable number. A lot of your two-bedroom condos are built that way, so. And again, Hernando County's done it, and they make the limit to, based on the size of the structure that's beside it, or part of it, then I think it works.
I think we had three at 800, and we moved it to, even moved it to 900, is the direction I heard.
The last time this was brought to you, we had it at 900, and then the language that we have today has 900 with the caveat that if you have one acre or a larger lot, you could do 1,200, but it's to the board's discretion if they want to adjust that further.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want that one-acre caveat. It would have to be bigger and rural. I live on three acres. It would not be appropriate in my neighborhood to put another house on my property. I could put a barn with an apartment above, but if you want, if you want, if you have a big lot and you want your family to move in, you can just subdivide your lot, build a house next door.
Would you like me to keep going through the rest?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. So the next discussion point, staff adjustments to previously proposed language in terms of permitting a special exception for dimensional standards. So we previously were allowing people to apply for a special exception for all the dimensional standards, including height, setbacks, size, and I think lot coverage was the one of them. We didn't really think it appropriate that someone allow, be allowed to apply for a special exception to exceed the height or lot coverage, so we kind of struck that, leaving the special exception ability for people that needs to go into the setback if needed or increase the size of the unit, but not so much for height and lot coverage. That's a change that we made. The next one, there was, oh, concern about ADUs and primary structure being used as short-term rentals. So again, our current language says that they are prohibited. Now, there's potentially enforcement issues along with that, maybe a separate conversation, but our current language prohibits them unless they go through the process that we already have in place.
Which is a neighborhood that allows them by right, right? We have neighborhoods that have said we're okay with short-term rentals?
I believe if you're trying to get a short-term rental...
Here comes our expert.
Yes, Denise Hernandez.
Denise Hernandez. So yes, there are several ways. So it's either already approved in their plat, so it's in the plat recordation. The other way would be, if it's not in the plat recordation, there are certain, there are certain neighborhoods that have been pre-approved from when they registered back many years ago. And then the other way would be to go through the conditional use process, but before you start that process, they have to have a petition signed by 51% or more of the owners that live within that plat or within the subdivision, and that could start the actual process, and it's a conditional use and comes to the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners for approval.
Okay, Commissioner Mariano, did you have a question?
I was just going to make a point. I mentioned that email to everybody. I just looked at it, looked it up, and I was actually sending it to Terry, but it was still in draft form, and it doesn't exist.
Oh, okay.
My error, so, he's got it now, but anyway, so I apologize. I thought you all would have...
I do also want to make a note, and this might be one of the slides that Patrick had in the beginning, which, what's going through the legislature right now may outright completely prohibit them, so...
Short-term ADUs?
Short-term vacant, vacation rentals. At least one of, I don't know if it's the House bill or the Senate bill, has that within it.
You mean anywhere?
Anywhere.
In Florida?
That's correct.
Good luck with that.
For an ADU, that, correct. That an ADU cannot be, correct, that an ADU cannot be used as a vacation rental. That's one of the versions that's out there. Thank you.
Okay, so next slide. Another discussion point, is there potentials for eliminating impact fees for ADUs? So staff response there, "The removal of the county's impact fees for de minimis impacts is at the discretion of the BCC. Please note that affordable ADUs committed to below 80% AMI are already exempt from most impact fees. An additional recommendation for BCC to consider for ADUs is that, that do not qualify as affordable." So all of these recommendations exclude water and service connection fees, but you could exempt all impact fees other than schools for a unit less than 500 square feet. This exemption is based on the existing home addition square footage that is exempt from increased mobility fee based on house size. The school district also is going to be evaluating a potential diminished threshold as part of their next update to the school impact fee. For units between 500 and 900 square feet, continue to rely on the existing mobility fee and school discount rate and the applicable rates for other impact fees, and for units above 900 square feet, full impact fees shall be paid. So that's the proposal from staff on how to handle impact fees for ADUs. Any questions on that?
Trying to figure out what the difference is between B and C.
So there's currently already a row in our mobility fee table that has basically a discounted rate for ADUs, because we do have some ADUs in the county already through some MPUDs like Longleaf and others.
Yeah, well, I love A, but I don't understand the difference between B and C.
Yeah, so B is just saying...
Just have a discounted school rate.
B is saying, "We're going to rely on what exists in our current tables, which is basically a discount." And then C is saying, you know, anything above 900, to your point, is like a single-family home, so therefore it should be charged full impact fees. That's the difference between B and C.
Well, if that's the case, let them go 1,200 square feet if they're going to pay full, full impact fees. I mean, give them more bang for their buck if you're trying to incentivize them. You just wash them.
If they come in, if we allow that on larger-than-one-acre lots, in my opinion, in areas in the county, I, I don't understand, though, once you get to a three-acre, five-acre, 10-acre lot, why don't they just subdivide instead of building another home, home on the property?
Sometimes properties are already subdivided as max as they can be.
Well, we're going to get rid of those, we're going to get rid of that, I think.
Well, it's not, that's not today, but a lot of properties are already subdivided as far as they can, they can't subdivide it anymore. They're at their five, or their 10-acre, or they're stuck at 20, or they're stuck with whatever. This allows them to do more with their property that they own, freedom with their land, property rights.
Well, we don't...
You know, you have rules for everything.
Yes, we do. Do you want to just get rid of everything?
Get rid of everything.
All the rules?
Trying to, well, yeah, I've had my way. I'd cut a whole lot of rules out of, out of things, and Jack's smiling.
I'm with you.
But, but this is, this is to allow, look, when you bring up the kids and their cars, they're going to be at the house regardless if they have this or not. The cars are still going to be in the driveway, because they can't afford to live anywhere, so they're still going to be at home, so the same amount of cars are going to be there irregardless, but if there's an extra bedroom or two. They're still going to use the same amount of water, irregardless if there's, it's just more space that people can not be so crammed in their home. That's what it comes down to.
And really, when we think about 300 square feet, it's really tiny.
The minimus.
It's very small.
I am, I am okay with no impact fees for up to 900 feet. I didn't want any. I want to encourage... I, I am okay with no impact fees for up to 900 feet. I, I didn't want any, I want to encourage them. So I was trying to figure out how to even get away from water and sewer, and one of the ways we talked, if they were smaller, one of the ways we talked about it was if they didn't have a separate meter. If it was metered with the house, and then, and, and they paid their water bill as part of the house bill, as part of their rent, you wouldn't have to have another meter, and you wouldn't have another connection. I, I think it's really important to encourage them, but not 1,200. But I'd be okay with this charge.
Okay. Do you want me to keep going?
Madam Chairman, more discussion? Again, it is America. If someone does have a big house and they want to add it on to it, what do we really care if they have a 900 or 1,200 square feet?
They can add on to their house.
I'm just saying-
This is a separate house, this is separate-
I, I'm just saying, 900 feet, 1,200 feet is what we're talking about. So what does it really matter to the whole thing, other than someone's comfort? And if it's affordability, if they can't afford 12, they're going to build nine. But literally, I've got one, one parent who's a senior that lives in a loan, does not want to go into a home, wants to stay in her place. She's comfortable there, she's got company that comes down, they can stay there, be comfortable, they have their own space.
But she don't need 1,200 feet.
She wants, it's not need, it's wants. This is all about wants. Are wants important?
Honestly, we just looked into this for my mom, and we had an architect, and she, she really wanted the space for her friends.
Yeah.
And we could not do it in that little of square feet.
Well, my daughter just rented a 700-square-foot house in Newport Ritchie, and it's kitchen, a living room, two bedrooms, a bathroom, and a hall closet for 700 feet. So 1,200 is, is a starter house, in my opinion. I don't know. So are you switching now from 900, because maybe I'm, I don't know, people need to speak up. I, I think 1,200 are way too big. Unless you're on a really big lot.
Think about it.
My neighborhood is half-acre, acre, and three-acre lots.
When these happen, they're going to be taxed on it, so they're going to figure out how big they want to go, if we say up to. You're not going to get 100% of 1,200 square feet.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So I'll say I want 1,200 feet.
I agree.
I'll third it.
I'll fourth it.
Prove it.
Let's move on.
All right, all right. That's a hillbillies. Okay. And they can all be, and they can be trailers.
Yeah, would, would you like, you can keep going?
We just took care of that part of it for you, let's move.
Okay, we're going to keep moving. The next discussion point, Commissioner Mariano. Look into allowing poured and metal piers in terms of fixed foundation. Not a subject matter expert here, so relied on the building department. So from the building department, technically, from the Florida Building Code perspective, a foundation can be designed using any material provided it meets all of the structural requirements. So we're changing our language to now say ADUs must be built on permanent fixed foundation that is designed to meet the requirements of the Florida Building Code and any reference standards. So I think that should hopefully solve your concern last time, okay? Next slide. Okay, great. So at the last hearing, we had a citizen come up and speak about the setbacks, and then also sent an email, I think, to Commissioner Waitman about these setbacks. So citizen concern in email, wanted accessory setbacks instead of using the primary setbacks of the zoning district. So just to clarify, staff is proposing that for the ADU, whatever your required setback is for the zoning, that's what you use. For accessory structures, we allow those to get on to five. So our response there, when staff was considering setbacks for ADUs, staff was concerned about the expectations of neighbors. When purchasing land, the expectation is that the neighbor will be a certain distance away. The neighbor may have a shed or garage, but these things are usually not used as often as the primary structure is. With the addition of an ADU, there could now be an accessory, accessory living unit that could potentially be right next to the property line. The use of the primary setback was to ensure that any impact an ADU has on its neighbor was next to minimal. One could envision an ADU being built on a second floor with, within the five feet of the property line, which would have a window looking right down into neighbor's backyard. Regardless, such someone wants to deviate from these primary structures setback requirements, we provide the ability for an applicant to apply for a special exception to obtain a smaller setback, which requires planning commission approval and a notice of public hearing. So. Any questions on that?
Okay, I want to go back to the slide before. I have a question on the parking-
Okay.
And the driveways to these houses that are going to be built behind the other house.
Okay.
Okay, I want a rule that you can't park in, in the grass in the yard. So they're going to have to provide a driveway and parking for the cars, all right? We're not going backwards in this county, we're supposed to be premier. And I can show you house after house in my district where there's no yard because it's all cars parking in the front yard. And then also, we have a rule, is the lot coverage, is the coverage of the lot rule still there?
Is the coverage-
Yeah, in my neighborhood, in my boathouse, you cannot cover, you have to leave at least 20% of your lot permeable.
Sure. Yeah, lot coverage still exists.
But they're going to have to have a driveway, are they, are they going to have, are we going to require that 1,200 feet to have a garage?
Yeah, so they're, they're-
Grandma will go park outside.
Yeah, and, and as I'm sure you know, there are many different types of ADUs, right? ADU could be someone adding almost an expansion onto their home, and with, just with a second entrance. It could be a garage conversion, it could be an actual little unit in the back.
They just have to have a place where the cars can park?
Sure.
Not on the yard.
And we, we have in our code that they have to follow our land development code in terms of, of parking. I don't-
We don't have a rule on that right now.
Yeah, I don't think our code gets into the specifics about parking on the driveway, about parking on-
But I want that in, in this one.
Okay, sure, we'll have to figure out what that looks like, I guess. So if we're going to keep going. Okay, a general question was asked about floodproofing a garage conversion. Commissioner Starkey, I think you asked this. So our answer is they need to follow the Florida Building Code and FEMA regulations. Not every garage will be able to be converted to an ADU based on these standards. So if they can meet FEMA regulations, they can convert, if not, sorry. Next discussion point, the county attorney, thank you to Mr. Stein-Snyder. Read off a planner's definition of an ADU, focusing on the fact that ADU is smaller than the principal structure. So we added in language, clarifying language, that the ADU shall be smaller than the principal unit. So just a small, I think, oversight on our side, but just really just clarifying that the ADU needs to be smaller. So again, appreciate Mr. Stein-Snyder on that. And then last but not least, this is an item that I, I kind of talked about the last time, but we weren't really fully prepared, and we really didn't get everything cleared up until actually yesterday at 4 o'clock, so I'm happy about that. So the planning commission voiced concern about permitting ADUs in locations that rely on infrastructure, so roads, that may not be safe during storm events, all right? So the planning commission tasked us with trying to come up with some sort of map or some sort of way to, if we are going to permit ADUs in certain areas, make sure that, you know, we're not adding to a problem. So we added this code language. Should an ADU be proposed on a parcel for which local roadway access is located in a FEMA flood zone, administrative review and approval of the ADU by the county administrator or designee is required. The county administrator or designee may deny or condition the approval of the ADU if the local roadway access is unsafe during a storm event using historical flooding data. Such determination is appealable to the planning commission pursuant to section 407 of this code. So basically what that looks like, an ADU building permit is applied for. The building permit team would review the segment of the local road between the parcel in question and the next closest division road. And if that segment is, if one of these roadway segments falls within a flood zone, the PDE department is notified so an additional evaluation can be done. So this evaluation will rely on information about emergency response or flooding data provided by other relevant departments. So we'll probably reach out to Public Works and our fire departments to see if this segment of road, if in a flood zone, they've had issues before in the past. Should no immediate issue be identified, permit can continue, no problem. If there are concerns that can be conditioned, the permit should be conditioned. If there are concerns that can't be conditioned, the permit will be denied, but that denial is appealable to the planning commission. So even if they get a denial from staff, they still have a method to kind of go to another body to get an answer. So that's how we plan on tackling the planning commission's request.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
That would take out everything west of US 19, and this past summer, you would probably lock out Zephyr Hills and Date City, too. I think you're doing too much overreach here. If a home's built, it's already inhabited, it's, some people live in there, what's the difference? I need one more.
I'll horse trade with you.
Well, you, you win on-
900 feet?
Nope.
You win on, you win on cutting impact fees. You're winning there on the impact fee piece. That's, that's what you said, on number three. The driveway piece, though, I, I need some clarity on that. We're going to start requiring driveways being built and all this other. I was a bit confused.
Well, they can use the house driveway, the original driveway.
The original driveway.
I mean-
If I'm reading this correctly, the, the house, pending house bill would disallow you the ability to increase the parking requirements for an accessory dwelling unit.
I'm not saying increase, just you have to have some.
No, no, it says you may not increase it beyond what the single-family-
Okay, that's fine, but they just can't park on the grass. They can't take out their landscaping and their grass for the family, whatever's moving in.
Well, that's not a one-size-fits-all solution. It's easier to go, if these go on larger lots, then people probably won't park on, in their yard.
In the backyard, but not in the front yard.
Right. Park wherever they want.
I'll show you some photos of people who have lots of ADUs right now.
So, so that's my entire presentation. So I think there's still some things that you guys like to discuss and work out, and I'm here to answer any questions. I don't know if there are any public here to speak on it, but I'm here if there are any other questions.
Madam Chair, why don't you do, do public commentary?
Is there anyone here which is to speak to this ordinance?
There's no one on WebEx.
Okay, back to us. Commissioner Mariano?
So let's talk about the impact fees. Again, Commissioner Waitman's saying that, pretty much saying people live in the house or stay in the house. And this shouldn't be any, any extra impact, if we can avoid it. And we want to really increase the opportunities for people living in affordable housing, living with their families, which I think is a great way to go. If we can, I would like to make a motion to approve this with 1,200 square feet for a cap.
Mr. Chair, Madam Chairman.
Yes.
We have given you the legally defensible way to do impact fees in the body of the memo.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't go for that.
The, the problem is that once you do this, you jeopardize the mobility fees for everything.
Okay.
I would concur with that. I mean, these are the size of an apartment. If you want, if we exempt this use, you're affected, I'm going to have apartments suing me, saying the candidate says impact fees to apartments either.
Okay, all right, done. So I'll move approval with the notation that we can go to 1,200 square feet.
1,200 feet if it's an acre or more.
Just 1,200 feet.
No. No, come on, guys.
If I get a 250 square- I've got an example right here.
That's another house.
It could be built right on top of it.
You don't know what can of worms you're opening up at that size. That is not an ADU.
This is our solution to the Live Local Act. It's better than that.
Well-
Please give a shot, heck, in another three weeks, legislation might kibosh it anyway.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I'm the one who pushed for ADUs, and this has just been stolen into, let's, let's just wreck the county. That's my opinion. I don't think it's, I'm a very big proponent of ADUs, and I've studied them a lot, and they're not 1,200 feet. So you're just getting around, you're going around someone building another house.
The size, I think, is going to be limited by the cost of the unit. And I don't think a lot of people can afford to build a 1,200 feet. They'll try to build what they need rather than more than they need.
And I'm sure that it also with HOAs and things like that, there might be rules to how they, but on people's land, you know, they're a big, a big lot.
If they're on a big lot, they can just build another, give some land to their kid, or whatever.
Madam Chair, I, I have another suggestion. You make, tell me to go sit down, but I'll lay it out there. Perhaps we're focusing on the square footage, maybe we could cap it, no more, the ADU can't exceed two bedrooms per unit.
I'm fine, yeah. But, but I don't want, two-bedroom, 1,200-foot, no, I, you know what? People will go around that once the walls are built up. I'm sorry. I, I, I just will not vote for 1,200 feet. I'm just embarrassed to-
I'm going to restate my motion. Do I have to? I don't have to. I got a motion in a second. Period.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We'll call.
Oh, we'll call, okay.
Wait, so just real quick, what I missed, what, what's the motion?
1,200.
1,200, no acres.
1,200, no cap. What about the stormwater infrastructure piece that you guys talked about at the end? Are we keeping that, or are we removing that?
Let's go back to that, sorry.
Can you go back to that?
And it's-
Yeah, I would, I would leave that out, too. Leave, leave the stormwater part out.
Leave it out, okay.
What, wait, what are you saying?
ADUs will be available in-
Anywhere, any size, any lot size.
Well, well, the, the-
Is that what you're saying?
The issue of whether or not they, you, whether or not you're in a flood zone, or were, have previous flooding, is, you're not addressing that issue in the ordinance. An ADU is available where an ADU is regardless of increasing density and floodway. Is that, that's how I understand.
Yes.
And Commissioner Starkey, too. There's any, we make, the 1,200-foot cap, all that does is if someone wants to come in to the max, it eliminates a bureaucratic step, this is what I, it's eliminating a bureaucratic step to come in, get the special exception, pay the fee for 300 more additional fees.
Well, why don't we waive the fees for special exceptions if it's an ADU?
Well, what do you think?
Nope. What motion wait is?
Will anyone else take my amendment to the motion? What you're going to have in this county is people coming in and building 1,200-foot homes on their lots, their one-acre lots, and they're going to, with a different intent than what an ADU is. That is what the door you're opening up is. Was that good English?
I understood.
That's what, that's, that's the Pandora that you're opening here. I don't think that's what our intent was. Our intent was to provide a lower-income additional rental space and the ability for someone to have a, a parent or someone who's elderly come stay comfortably with them.
But what about-
It wasn't to have a whole family move into your lot in your neighborhood, in their own house. That's not an ADU.
These are not inexpensive.
I didn't say anything about inexpensive.
These, these are, when these, these aren't going to be, these are going to be expensive. So I-
I think when you're up to the size of 1,200, you, the, the neighborhood and the county needs to be able to take a look at it, if it's an acre, and what that impact is. I don't think you should open the door to 1,200 feet without any rules except the setback, really. That's what you're doing here, just-
Please call the roll.
Roll call.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District three, Chairman Starkey.
Nay. Okay, we're on P 35.
Item P 35 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 12, 2025, March 19th- Item P. 35 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 12, 2025, March 19, 2025, March 26, 2025, and April 2, 2025.
Good afternoon. Hyatt Mizili, Senior Planner with Planning, Development, and Economic Growth. Item P. 35 is actually PDE 250015. It's an ordinance establishing McKinney Point Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, providing for authority and power of the districts, providing for powers and duties of the districts, providing for the Board of Supervisors of the districts, providing for the district budget, providing for functions of the districts, and providing for miscellaneous provisions, and finally providing for an effective date. This comes with the recommendation from the Planning and Development, for Planning, Development, and Economic Growth to adopt by a roll call. And we have a staff presentation if you wish to hear it.
Would anyone in the public like to speak against P. 35?
It's either way on these, but I'd take your-
There's no one on WebEx.
Uh, roll call.
See no, no public comment, move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Yeager.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District three, Chairman Starkey.
Aye.
Item P. 36 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on March 5, 2025.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nictarros Pito's, Planning, Development, and Economic Growth. Item P. 36 is PDE 250135. This is the Land Development Code Amendment, an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners for docks and seawalls. It's coming to you with the recommendation today to continue the item to the May 6 meeting in Dade City. However, we're requesting an updated continuance to the May 20, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting in Newport Ritchie at 1:30 p.m.
Terry, before you go further, I'm going to have our county attorney give instructions.
Sure. There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval and there's no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning may at this time request the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi-judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public sport or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the board's Land Development Code for rezonings. Madam Clerk, would you like to swear the public in? We only have one item, but-
Is there anyone here to speak on the items, the rest of the items? Please stand. Okay. All right, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you. On P. 36?
P. 36.
P. 36 is a continuance.
Yes, okay.
So the continuance, again, was delivered to you on May, for May 6, BCC, but we're requesting it to be for the May 20, 2025 Board of County Commissioners meeting in Newport Ritchie at 1:30 p.m.
Okay, so P. 37.
Do you need a motion?
Oh, I need a motion to continue.
Move to continue, time certain?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
On P. 37?
Yep.
Okay, item P. 37 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on February 19, 2025, and 2025, and affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P. 37 is PDE 257859. This is a zoning amendment, the name of St. Joe Walk Incorporated slash St. Joe Walk. It's a change in zoning from an ER 2 Estate Residential District to an ER Estate Residential District in northeast Pasco County, at the southeast corner of the intersection of Sharber Road and St. Joe Road, containing approximately 66.82 acres. This comes to you with the recommendation of approval from the local planning, or for the planning commission and for the Planning, Development, and Economic Growth Department. There were two late expartes that were received from Commissioner Waitman and Commissioner Oakley. These expartes were emailed and received by the clerk's office previous to this meeting.
What's the difference between the ER 2 Estate Residential and the ER Estate Residential?
Essentially, it's two and a half, ER 2 is two and a half acre lots, and ER is a one-acre lot.
One acre.
This is move two and a half acres to one acre lot.
Any discussions?
Okay, sir.
Yeah, but you can still-
If I can explain it a little better. Between St. Joe and St. Joe Road, where it crosses at Sharber Road and Lake Iowa Road and Jasmine Road and Curly Road meeting St. Joe, there's two areas of interest here because the fact of it is this would go from two and a half acres to one-acre tracks. But when we were looking at the northeast rule and going through the advisory committee, my vision came out that the area of St. Joe should be a small community center in that area that would service the people in the rural area around that. And so in saying that, I have no problem with moving from the two and a half acre sites to the one acre sites, and it's actually on the opposite side, the north side, is a Catholic church and a Catholic school on the other side of the road there. The thought came up in looking at this the other day that possibility of maybe two roundabouts, one at St. Joe and Jasmine and Curly, and one up at Lake Iowa, Sharber, and St. Joe, a roundabout, would tend to slow traffic down in this area and also because of the school there right next to it on the north side and the church, and then the opposite side you'll have one acre sites with a possibility on strip of land on the corner of Sharber and St. Joe, which is the-
Doing what on the corner?
Southeast, the corner of St. Joe and Sharber Road. There's a possibility that it can come some commercial, which is across the old St. Joe store.
You don't want it to be stripped out, right? But to add neighborhood commercial.
It's already there.
I see it on the other, isn't that where that restaurant was? I always wanted to go to.
Yeah, and that restaurant's coming back.
That's a cute little commercial node there.
Yeah, and that's why I say it's, my vision is that that would be a community node that could be used this way. So the one-acre lots in between Sharber and Curly would not be an issue because it's in, within that community, and it would actually, with a roundabout, should slow down traffic.
Well, should we take-
Roundabouts are not something we're voting on today, it's a possibility in the future.
Well, do you want to take the corner and make that C. 1?
Well, it's not part of this.
Oh.
It's a separate product, property that will come to us later. So it's not something that would be done right now.
You're talking about the north?
All we're doing-
East corner will come back because we're-
No, the southeast. The southeast corner-
Is it not the southeast corner that we're rezoning today?
Yes.
That's the southeast corner. Why not? If their intent is to have that corner be commercial, I would be supportive of that.
But that's not here today.
Right, so the proposal here is to go from ER 2 to ER, which is actually, it's a little, it's a little bit of a history involved in which one could argue that there was a scribbler's error in the previous zoning action, that this should have always been ER. Nevertheless, they're only proposing what you see in the pink there to change the zoning back to ER. The commercial properties are located on the west side of Lake Iowa, which is on the north side of St. Joe, and so that's where I think the commissioner is referring to. We had lots of discussions over the years about how commercials should form up in the northeast Pasco County rural area, and in some of those previous conversations, there was very limited applications of commercial in the existing locations. I think the commissioner, and correct me if I'm wrong, is highlighting the fact that there's existing commercial at this intersection.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
But also, and Terry doesn't know that yet, but it's also a possibility that on the southeast corner, when they bring in that property for zoning-
You mean the southwest?
It could be a commercial node right on that corner, too.
On the southwest?
So it makes all, yeah, makes three corners commercial.
Yes.
See what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yeah, but not all four commercials?
It's just a separate node.
I would make all four commercials.
It's like a village.
Right, but no strip centers. You don't want a strip center in village, in a little village.
Yeah, that's always, St. Joe's always been a community in the rural area, so.
Like to bring a bike trail to it.
You might could. They travel that route in there.
They're doing all right.
Yeah.
Okay, this is on consent, but is there anyone here which is to speak against this item?
No one's on WebEx.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
You bring up a good point. So right along St. Joe Road, are they putting a trail out in the front?
Yeah, that, there should be a place for a multi-use path. That's a very traveled road.
I'm surprised you didn't pick up on that.
Well, I think Lake Iowa Road that goes by the RV park going out toward-
I'm going to get it on the map. Can you, can you pull out?
County Route 41, that might be a connection of the route for the bikes.
Well, if kids that live in the neighborhood and they want to get up to the neighborhood commercial there, it would be good if they're not in the road riding their bikes there.
Oh, I understand that, yeah.
Yeah, so what is-
But this is a straight rezoning, and that would have to be addressed at site, time, site, site.
Okay, all right.
Another issue, so.
We'll deal with that next time.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion that we accept this change.
There wasn't any.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, we are back to Commissioner Items. Oh, wait, wait, guys, I have one more question on the ADU. Just want to make sure we covered all our bases. Do we have any architectural considerations of what people put in their yards? Does it need to match, if you're building a separate house, do you want it to match the vernacular of the house, or can it be?
You're preempted.
We're preempted.
It should be. It should match the materials.
Okay, so there, there you go. Look what we just did. Bring it on.
That's-
It's going to be-
The last legislative session, they basically told you you couldn't regulate architecture.
So it can be monthly, yes.
Madam Chair, I may interrupt. Terry Schrader, 31414, Pasco Road. I appreciate your vote of confidence. I didn't want to say, though, Terry pointed out, was a scribbler's error, and this thing was lingering since 2006, but also want to just acknowledge your staff, they helped us through this to try to clean it up, so thank you very much.
All right, great. Okay, Commissioner Yeager.
Me?
Yep.
Okay. Well, first, I would, just like, I know Sheriff Nakho talked to you guys all separately, and he was talking about his helicopters and aviation.
Oh, I started, wait, I started the wrong place.
That's what he was wondering.
Because I was looking that way.
We're not going in.
Commissioner Oakley.
We're changing order.
I'm sorry.
I mean, you're chairman, and you can't change that order.
Yeah, I'm just a little not happy to them. So go ahead, Commissioner Oakley.
Okay, so I'm not going.
Not yet.
Okay.
That was just a practice.
It's not just a-
Just wondering if you were paying attention.
I know the guy in the middle.
Commissioner Oakley.
You know that guy?
Yeah.
This is when we had our trip up to Tallahassee, and we got a different folks that we were able to meet with, and-
Was this the second time?
Yeah.
Because I was there the first time.
That might have been his second time, but it was my first time. But I will say, I felt better about our attendance in Tallahassee this time over what we did the time before, last year. This felt a lot better, and I think everybody was on board with what we were trying to push through, so, for the betterment of all our citizens, so. But then we had the, we had this lunch reception with the group, the seniors, senior services annual lunch, and you can't tell because they don't have moving parts, but I'm actually dancing with these ladies on the left.
Aw, that's funny.
They kept bothering me to dance, to dance with them, so I finally got up and danced with them, then I spoke to them, and then the gentleman, his first name is George, he was 100 years old, and we sat and talked with him, and he'd been in the area for quite a while, so it was very nice. And then, then we, let's see where, oh, this is the graduation of the fire rescue class of 2503, and it's amazing the bright young women, young men and women that come forward to be firefighters, EMS, and all. I was told that this might be, because we've had an influx of new candidates for our fire services since a couple of years ago, we've changed, we got in with the D-shift, and it has brought a lot more, and turned us around as far as losing, I believe it was prior to two years ago, we lost, in public safety, we lost 72 individuals in that year, and this, this past year, we only lost two.
Stitches, please.
So it's turned around, and we're then maybe one more class of having finished hiring for our D-shift, and from that point on, then they'll probably be smaller, because we're going to still have to bring in new people because we'll, from time to time, we're going to lose some people, so. But it's a better program than having to lose all of them and try to hire them all back, so this is a very good program, a very good outlet for citizens of Pasco County to have these folks do their part in working for citizens in the fire rescue and EMS. Very important. Y'all remember the story on the fire EMS and the, or the firefighters that went out? A gentleman had the emergency room in Newport Ritchie. The firefighter stopped and treated a man that had a heart attack mowing his yard, and then they, they got him stable and moved him to the hospital, and then later that day, they came back and finished mowing the yard for the gentleman that had the heart attack.
I love that.
And that's, that's what our firefighters do.
He got honored at the-
It's very good. I think everybody remembers that, so. It's hard to forget that story, so, very nice.
All right, that's all I have.
Commissioner Waitman.
Thank you, Madam. No, no updates for committee reports at this meeting, but first want to give a shout out to our Pasco Hernando State College Bobcats. I think we all saw they're ranked first place in the Sun Coast Conference in the NJCAA Division 1. As of right, you know, they're 39, they're 33-9 overall, 9-2 in the Sun Lake Conference, and as this month, they're still hold the rank of first place, the first time ever in the program's history, and so congratulations to Dr. Peizers and ball coach and all the players as they box it out this season. Good job. And then, next, it was honor to represent the board at Johns Hopkins groundbreaking. I think everybody here will soon be hearing, hearing from them. Just an exciting, exciting piece of medical infrastructure and business coming to Pasco and to see the kids talk and, and the community gather around. It's 112-acre site, it will have 56 beds and 16 emergency rooms, and I think there'll be a lot of synergies between intersections at 52 and 75 with Calumnares Project Double Branch and what we have at Overpass and 75. So excited to, to see them break ground, and they're planning on opening their doors in 2027, and the community seems to really be rallying around them, and just, just such a wonderful opportunity for, for service for kids and families, not just here, but citrus and- Citrus and Sumter and Hernando and everybody on up to the north and the northeast. And BayCare, want to congratulate BayCare, you know, they're on Roosby Downs, and are recognized by the Times as the best place, one of the best places to work here this year, and so it's just good to see all the competition amongst our providers to compete, you know, brings in great talent, hopefully great residents, you know, they want to move here and live here and bring their families and have a great life here in Pasco County, so thank you to all the healthcare providers, and glad to see that good things are on the horizon. And that's it, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Jaeger, now you get to go.
Okay, well, I'll do my pictures first. Okay, so this was, this was, oh, this place was really neat, Catherine, you should definitely tour this place if you haven't. This is called Hope Services, so they.
Oh, yeah, I've had to cancel on them twice, but yeah.
Oh, no, yeah, so they're great.
I'll get there.
So they teach culinary, retail, construct, construction, hospitality, computer skills, and they support tutoring, and the one picture that was just shown.
This for, for kids with special needs.
Yep, kids with special needs, and then this right here, the, keeps going away, okay, so the, this is donated by IKEA, they had an extra conveyor belt, so there's a place for groceries that kids can scan them, and they learn how to count change and all of that. They have the products over there, they're, they're free to people in the community that they can try certain expensive products without having to buy them, so the whole thing was very interesting. They have a woodworking program, they have all sorts of, they have one room, and it doubles as a hospitality room, where they have a daybed that comes down, so the kids learn how to make beds and things like that. It was, it was very impressive. Okay, next slide.
She just came on the Career Source Board with me.
Oh, did she? And this was one more child, this was, everybody should go visit this place, but they, they say one more child, one more family, and they're big into hunger and just wrapping around the family, and they have a grocery store set up where people can come shop and pick up food, so that was amazing. Okay, next slide. I'll try and write these, but, okay, and up, this is all, this was their legacy wall. Okay, next slide. And we've also partnered with them, with Grace's Food Pantry, so, so families will be, will be able to help feed families here in Pasco. So the only reason I'm showing my pop-up pantry again is we fed 297 people two weeks ago. We have another one tomorrow, and 35 new families, so it's just, it's really going great out there. Okay, next one. This was the grand opening for McDonald's, they said I could make a sandwich, and I declined, so I paid for myself. And then they just thanked me for all their help, and said I could pick a charity of my choice for a $1,000 donation, so I picked Grace's Food Pantry.
Nice.
And that hamburger and drink is a cake, so, and this was really cool, too, for everybody, if you know somebody that needs a job, if they pay 25, get $25 deducted out of their paycheck, McDonald's will match it and give them lift rides to work, so I thought that was pretty cool.
Yeah.
All right, next slide. And this was ex Gen X, we had the ribbon cutting for that yesterday, and that was all about food safety and foodborne, you know, trying to get away with, away from foodborne illnesses, that was very impressive. Go ahead, next slide. This, okay, this was, and everybody, every machine had a name, that was auto, they, it was, it was really neat, I encourage everybody to take a tour, and it's a beautiful building, okay? And everything is sourced in the United States. And this was a ground, the groundbreaking for our new fire station going up in your district, Catherine, okay?
No, it's Jack's.
It is?
Yes.
Oh, I thought it was yours, okay. So, back to what I was saying, so take two, I know Sheriff Naco met with everybody and gave them a presentation, and I was very moved by, you know, we know that they have issues with their helicopters, they're old, they're having a hard time getting parts for the helicopters, and they have an, an opportunity to buy two used helicopters, basically for the price of one. They come fully, fully stocked, it even has a water bucket, so fire rescue can use it. I would love to make a motion to allow them to have the $7.5 million, and leave it kind of at the, there's discretion, we can figure out where, where it's coming from, but it is time-sensitive, because Volusia County needs to know by tomorrow. If any of you would like a presentation, Chase can present, do a presentation or, or talk on that. Do any of you have any questions that maybe Chase can answer? But I, I personally would love to see the sheriff get these helicopters, they're gonna, we'll be using them in the storms to get people off their, their roofs, their helicopters are aging, this is a time where we get two-for-one helicopters, I asked if they had storage for them, the answer is yes, so I think this is a great deal.
I'll second that motion.
Um, I think, Cass, when I had the presentation, that they wanted both of them, I knew they wanted one of them.
Nope.
So they have six now, but I know some of them aren't.
Yeah, so the two that they, they use currently are.
Well, they have six. Two are not safe to fly.
Right, and the two they have, well, the two they use now, that they're having a hard time finding parts, so this is a good time, A, two-for-one, B.
Well, if it comes out of their budget, you know.
Well, this, if I may, this is what, what the Commissioner's proposing, actually, would be an amendment to the sheriff's budget, so we would ask the board to amend the sheriff's budget in an amount up to 7.5 million, the sheriff believes that there may be some wiggle room on that price, but that would be an upper limit, and then, you know, to purchase these two helicopters from Volusia County.
I don't know why I thought it was one.
And we would use, you would allow us to make the determination on the appropriate and available funding sources to, to source that from.
Okay, and can the sale of the, then, then I would ask that you get rid of all the other ones that are costing us a lot of maintenance money.
I'll let Chase Daniels speak to that.
Yes, ma'am, Chase Daniels, Pasco Sheriff's Office, 8661 Citizens Drive, Newport Ritchie. Yes, ma'am, so the, the presentation the sheriff gave, the, the one that we were speaking about, that was a, a full cost one, that we, that we believe would cost around 7.5 million dollars. We would need two of those, we were just going to ask, we were asking for one this year, and then one the following year to recapitalize our, our air fleet. To Commissioner Jaeger's point, we currently have four OH-58s, those are the Vietnam-era airframes, we basically fly two, and then we use two for, for parts, so our intent is to, and that, that's why, as the administrator noted, it's an upper limit, we believe that we're going to be able to negotiate that price down because of the parts and the able to, and the ability to scavenge those to a, a level lower than 7.5 million dollars, but the, the one was at a full cost, but we have the ability from Volusia to get two for, we, we believe it to be somewhere in the, in the ballpark of less than 7 million dollars to get two, instead of asking for, for one this year at a full cost of 7.5, and then a second one the, the next year.
But how many, how many are you going to get rid of?
So, our, our intent is to get rid of all four of the OH-58s.
Just another thing I want to, I want to point out is not only will the sheriff.
Wait, that's four, you have six.
Yes, ma'am, we, we, we still, we have two Hueys, and it's our intent as well, the, these 407s we'll be getting from Volusia County have the ability to do the Bambi Bucket operation and things like that, so it's our, our intent to phase out the, the Hueys as well, but we'll immediately get rid of the four.
Because if we sell, if we sell the other ones, that could help us get the money to pay for these.
Yes, ma'am.
You sell the Hueys, right?
So, so I, I can talk to, to the Huey, so we, we did talk to the company in Volusia County, to, to be quite honest, no one wants the Huey, so.
Right.
Our, our intent is to u, use them out, kind of save some mileage on, on these new helicopters, but then, once they're gone, they'll be gone, because no, no one wants to, to buy them.
So I, I want to clarify now, based on what you've said, and if the board is there, so if we amend the sheriff's budget to 7.5 million, upper limit to do that, but the total amount paid for the helicopters, do you want to offset that with any revenue that they collect on the salvage value of those helicopters? That's what I'm hearing.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, so we'll, we'll.
Madam Chair.
That's the board's intent, okay.
I mean, and, and Mike, I'm glad you're speaking to where the money's going to come from, I'd like to hear that discussion, and I'm, I'm, I'm good with getting the helicopters bought, I want to see every bit that you, you get rid of all the other helicopters, Hueys and all, just clear it all out, down to two. The reason I, I always told you, you need two, is in case one's being worked on, you're going to have the other one to go. So if that's the case, we only need two, because I also heard from years that we're going to start doing more drone work, et cetera, for other things, so between all that, I think two helicopters is fine, we don't need to be working on any more than just those two, because those still are going to be expensive.
The only, the only thing I have to say to that is, until I think the drone program is in full force right now, they'll have the two new ones, but like in a storm, you're talking emergency management, we'll be able to tap into them, the fire department, the police department, we're going to be able to transport a patient, drop them off at a hospital, like on a helicopter pad, I mean.
No, I agree with the two, I'm saying, that's what, and, and again, that was part of my discussion, too, was they need helicopters still for rescues, et cetera, and the rescues that everybody did together was phenomenal, so for that reason, I'm okay with the helicopters. I'm just saying, declare for us to save expenses on everything else, go do it, also to liquidate, to cut the, the actual cash down, and I think it's only 7 million we need, right? About 7.5?
I mean, it's, well, 7.5 is the upper limit that was requested by the sheriff, so we would, when they finalize the price, we would, we would amend the budget for the amount of the sale, and then we would expect that upon salvage value, that we would refund those dollars back into the, wherever we.
Well, you're not going to get 7 million, obviously.
So presumably, you know, for example, so if the salvage value is a million dollars, then, then we would.
Whatever would be, just goes back to the.
Yes, sir.
Places we took the money from.
Yeah, well, and, and.
Work those details out with the sheriff.
And, and if I could, we would also probably offer, or our thought is to offer to get the cost down, because I know the intermediary that Volusia, that Volusia County is working for, they have interest in some of our OH-58 parts, because they're so difficult to obtain, so we, that, that is where we, we envision getting that, that money down, so there may not be true revenue coming back, but it may drop the purchase price from, from 7 million to, you know, fi, 5.75 or something like that, once we get the, the parts, but then any of that money would, would be returned to the county.
Chase, but we can get rid of the Hueys.
Yes, ma'am.
Not phase them out, we can sell them.
We, we will, we will certainly, we will certainly do our, do our best to some, but we will, at the very least, not, not use them, if we can find, if we can find a buyer.
Okay, another sheriff's department somewhere.
I just had a question.
Commissioner.
I'll be sure, we're getting two from Volusia?
Yes, sir.
With a 7.5, or less?
Hope, uh, we, we believe less, but, but yes, sir.
Well, we're getting those two from.
Two, and, and they will also be, be fully equipped as well, so the, the 7.5, that is just the, that would have been just the airframe, but these are, are fully equipped.
All right.
Awesome, okay, Commissioner Waitman.
Chase, I, I think you should put the Hueys up, public auction, $4. I think that's what you should do.
So they'll haul them off.
All right, so can I, can I make a motion then?
You did.
Or I did, and some of them signed, seconded, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, so the motion is that we will advance the money.
Now, we'll amend, we will amend the sheriff's budget.
We'll amend the sheriff's budget.
Up to 7.5 million dollars for the purchase of two helicopters from Volusia County using available and appropriate funding sources.
Well, which budget, though? The current budget?
No, we will amend his current budget, so he can purchase them, and then when he, when they settle on the deal, then we will transfer the money, so they can close and, and do the purchase, that way we're only exchanging what we, what we actually need, that would be the intent. 7.5 is enough.
So it's coming out of reserve, our reserves?
So most likely, and the reason I ask for flexibility on that, is I want to check out, this just bubbled up yesterday from, from my, I mean, we've been talking about it, but in terms of seriousness, bubbled up yesterday due to the urgency and the need of sale and the condition of the fleet.
Someone else is going to get.
So, most likely, the vast majority will come from general fund reserves, however, if there are other sources that are more restrictive, I want to try to use those available funds.
We like it when you get creative.
We do that.
And I'll second, it's good.
And I, but I want to see the other parts, as far as the other helicopters being removed.
Yeah, that's part of it.
It sounds from, from Mr. Daniels here, that that may be part of the negotiation as part of the bundle, but.
Whatever's left over.
Between our offices, we'll ensure full transparency on salvage value and purchase of helicopters.
To reduce the expense to the general fund reserves.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Oppose? All right, go shopping.
Thank, thank you, thank you all very much, and thank you, Commissioner Jaeger, for bringing this forward, but thank you all for your support, thank you, the administrator, for counting, uh, this is a game changer for our folks, and we, we do appreciate it, so thank you.
And we need it for our citizens.
And we want our, our, our folks flying in safe helicopters, we don't want emergency landings in golf courses or wherever that was.
Yes, ma'am, three, three in the last six months, so we certainly look, look forward to, to avoiding those in the future.
And I love that every, you know what I mean, it could be used in emergency management, fire can use it, it's just, it's a great purpose.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, um, do you have more, Commissioner Jaeger?
No, I'm done.
Okay, Commissioner Mariano?
Do those pictures, Tony?
Yes, sir.
All right, um, so we just had the Chasco Fiesta, great success, from the opening day, from the parade, they say revenues were up better than they'd ever been before.
Okay.
The end, was, end, end concert on Saturday night was the Embry Brothers opening up with the frontmen coming behind them, never heard of them before, but they had some awesome songs, which I actually knew, just a, just a great event, great weather all the way through. This Saturday, at April 12th, at 10:00 a.m., we're going to be up at Sun West Park for the ribbon cutting, that's my group of friends that wanted to go, friends and relatives from out of town, bunch of, few tourists in there, and had a great time.
Bring the money.
Yeah, so, so April 12th at Sun West, we're going to do a ribbon cutting for the new trail, it's going to go all the way around the park, it's going to be the first 5K run there. I'm anticipating, for everybody who has nonprofits, schools, et cetera, I think countywide, we could do at least one a weekend, or two a weekend, and it could be four as time goes on. I want to work with Sports Coast to go put all the supplies out there for these 5K runs, because when you can run a 5K run without having to put the supplies up, the extra expenses, the money can stay in the community better, you can bring more people in, because you'll have better flexibility with it all, and I think that it's a great opportunity to, to do many other things. The Scholar Fest dates have been set, it's going to be opened up with the American Stones, and as we all know, the Pointer Distillery makes the rum for the Rolling Stones, the hurricane rum, which they released a few months back, they make it internationally now, I think it's going to be great to have a presentation with them there, and the American Stones to kick it all off, we've got tremendous local bands, so it's going to start Thursday night, July 24th, and then run every Friday and Saturday, every weekend, we're going to have, it's going to be much more friendly, family-friendly this week, this run, because we're added the Sundays in it as well, and during the day on Saturday, so I think it's going to be a great event. The Surtoma Group is still going to help do, they're running with, help running it with Steps to Recovery, that Veterans Program, so between all that, I think it's going to be a, a great, great event coming up. And just so everyone knows, I did miss those ribbon cuttings, groundbreakings yesterday, I was on my way up to go talk to Fish and Wildlife for a meeting to talk about the Aquatic Reserve, we're actually going to do that meeting today instead at 4:00.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking that up. Mr. Carbala.
I have several items, just, just a couple of minutes, I'll go in.
I think Ralph's one of them.
Order of least to most difficulty here. I'll start with, I, I met with you individually, we had to submit yesterday to the State Department of Government Efficiency a letter, essentially certifying that we were not in financial distress as a county, I had the chair sign that letter, and, and we've put that forward, we'll send you a copy there, Madam Clerk.
Yeah.
I'd like to bring Ralph on to talk about federal appropriation requests.
Ralph Blair, Inter-Governmental Affairs Officer. So I have a great opportunity where I can get a helicopter, so if you could just approve that, I'll be good. On a happy note, so I just wanted to bring up speed with the federal budget for 2025. 2025, the last couple of weeks, the, the last two weeks, the feds decided not to allow earmarks to go forward for the 2025 continuing resolution to finish out for the rest of the year, so we had several projects in play with Congressman Bill O'Racus and Congresswoman Lee, did not know if they would open the door to allow for 2026 projects, but they did so within the past, last week. So going forward, it's been recommended to us that Congressman Bill O'Racus would like us to resubmit the, exactly as they were last, last year, the four projects we had, which was for a pedestrian overpass at 54 in the Sun Coast Parkway for 6.2, the Pasco County Area Agency on Aging, we were looking at $4 million there, Pasco Extension Road at Moffitt Complex, this is for Moffitt, they're not able to put a project in, for $3 million, and then we had a inline chlorine booster station project for $6,844.80. To make it easier, Bill O'Rakis is saying, keep it as is, do not make any changes. Resubmit those for the 2026 time. Um, and then for Congresswoman Lee, she had two projects that she had, um, last year, but she pulled the trigger a couple, about almost a month ago, uh, seeking input for 2026, uh, not knowing if, if that was going to be allowed for earmarks. So we, we came up with three projects, um, ba- based on projects we were looking at, at the state level that we did not accept for our state projects. And, uh, we move forward with, uh, a fire station number 31, uh, which is over in the Wesley Chapel area. Um, Old Woods Avenue and Winfield Boulevard intersection improvements, and a reclaimed water improvement project. All these are within her district, uh, in the Wesley Chapel area. Um, and then today, um, sh- her office reached out to me and said they would also, um, allow us to submit the, uh, two projects from 2025, which in that case was for a sidewalk at Livingston Road that we had last year, and another chlorine booster in the Crystal Springs area, um, near Zephyr Hills. Now, with, uh, Congresswoman Lee, so she'll have five projects to look at, and then she will, she'll tell us within the next two weeks, week to two weeks, which project she will move forward on. We will probably get two projects. Uh, I anticipate, I don't know if we'll get any more. She's got several counties she's got to deal with, and each commission, or each congressman only is allowed 15 projects. So it's kind of hard when you have multiple counties. So with your approval, I'd like to have those, uh, they need to be submitted by Friday into their offices as we move forward for the 2026, uh, budget process with Congress.
I, I have one, one question. Um, the Area Agency on Aging, do they have a location already? For their supportive senior housing?
Yes, uh, they do, and so.
You're not going to tell me where, just want to make sure they had a location.
Yeah, they do.
Anybody else, anybody else have any questions? Commissioner Mariano?
I would like to have this discussion ahead of time to, to move it forward. I would also like to put something in with that Hudson Industrial Park we're trying to make happen. Um, I know it puts us.
Well, we don't get any new projects in Bill O'Rakis's area. He, he wants us to stay with the 2025, make it as simple as possible.
Yeah, the only, the only reason we had additional projects in, in Congresswoman Lee's office is because they started their process so much earlier and asked us for that, so.
Okay.
I'm, I move to approve.
Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Let's hope it goes through this year. Tough news when they cancel on.
It is, it is. Um, okay, two more to go here. I, I would like to bring Mr. Engel up if the board is good. He was, they were almost complete with their presentation, and I think there's just five minutes left that they would like to cover, so they.
Thank you. We're going to start off with Hyatt Mizzily, just going over the schedule for Pasco 2050.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hyatt Mizzily, Planning and Development Economic Growth, take two. Should we bring up the presentation? Thank you, Tony. So, um, this slide is showing the anticipated timeline for the Pasco 2050 Comprehensive Plan Update completion. We are on track to finalize the goal objectives and policies of the chapters, um, along with the future land use map, um, updated future land use map series. Uh, we anticipate in May-June timeframe to, um, hold workshops with the local planning agency and with the BOCC. And we're going to take it back to the public in July of 2025. Um, and we'll open conversations, open conversations, um, through a series of open houses. And that's when the public gets to review what's in the plan and of course provide us with our comments. And just, I want to note that before we go to the open houses, we will have all of our chapters up in our website in the June timeframe. So we'll give the public enough time to review the documents. And by mid-August through September, we, um, will start the public hearing process with the LPA and the BOCC. And following that, we'll transmit the plan, the Pasco 2050 plan, to Florida Commerce. And assuming and praying that everything goes well with Florida Commerce, we will, um, start the adoption process in the November-December timeframe. And the exciting part starts in 2026, when we actually make the Pasco 2050 vision a reality.
Nice. Okay.
Any questions?
Most of these, uh, open houses is going to be at nighttime?
It's going to be at 6:00 p.m., yes. Six to eight. And it's going to be countywide. So we'll have one in each of y'all districts. Welcome, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, and we have Terry, right?
And I, and I believe there were some questions about VOPH, and the board desired discussion. So, uh, Niktaros Pitos will come up and finish off his, uh, Q and A. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Niktaros Pitos, Planning and Development Economic Growth. Um, as I was mentioning earlier this morning, the VOPH financial plan is being assessed essentially this summer. I can repeat all the points that I made earlier about what the assessment will take a look at. Uh, suffice it to say that we are currently in the data and analysis phase. There will be policy synthesizing taking place among staff and our consultant, uh, with the LPA and the OPH, um, Planning Policy Committee in the June timeframe, and hopefully bringing this before, this plan before, or the assessment before the board in July. Um, at the same time, as all of the open houses are taking place with the Comprehensive Plan Update, we'll also be working the 2025 Mobility Fee Update Study. This study was last updated in 2021. Uh, there, this will update all of our tables, our mobility fee tables that get charged for the various land uses in time of, uh, certificate of, uh, occupancy. Um, the state has mandated updates approximately every four years and sets limits on how much you can increase the fee year, year to year. Uh, this is our four-year update that's taking place. We are looking to determine these types of policy questions here, the consolidation of the tables, adding new and additional land use codes, um, to make the tables a little bit more, uh, flexible and adjust to current, uh, marketplace. Uh, we're going to be asking questions on how much incentive we should be providing to our preferred ut- land uses. We're also going to be asking the question about how much incentive should we be providing to our non-prefer- preferred, uh, land uses? And then also similar to how we talked about in the VOPH Financial Plan Assessment, you know, we have to take a look at what our literary preservation assumptions include, what the mobility fees can actually fund, what kind of infrastructure requirements do we have to potentially change given the changing environment for the, uh, changing fiscal environment that we're in? Uh, one thing that is for certain, the mobility fee ordinance must be effective January 1, 2026, because December 31, 2025 ends our current mobility fee schedules.
Oh.
So this has to be effective January 1, which means that.
We can't miss.
Correct. Which means that, uh, we're looking at the local planning agency seeing the mobility fee update study potentially, probably in July according to schedule, with the first BCC hearing happening on the subject in August, and the second one following that, following on the heels of that, the second August meeting, uh, so that we can give enough time to do system updates within the cella and get prepared for the January 1 effective date. Um, at a minimum, we just need to get fiscal '26 mobility fee tables, or excuse me, calendar year '26 mobility fee tables, uh, in on January 1, and then we can follow up with the 2027, 2028, 2029 schedules, um, thereafter. But in effect, this mobility fee update study will be mapping out the mobility fee schedules for 2026, 2027, 2028, and 2029.
Okay.
Just like the '21 update did everything else.
Need to put that revenue against our, our vision map. Our, it's our see, see if we can build the roads we need.
Madam Chair.
Where's that coming from? Yeah.
So look at it, the influx of apartments, especially the Wesley Chapel area. I don't know if we collect enough from apartments for these mobility fees. Is there a way to look closely at that? Because you get working people usually, they're out in and out every day, twice a day, three times a day, whatever it may be. Evenings sometimes, but at least prime time, at, at peak hours where everything's based upon, where our big traffic is. I want you to take a close look at that. I don't think it just should be based on square footage, but pretty much what's the real impact? Because they have had a dramatic effect. And, and frankly, if there's a way to consider, uh, with this impact where this live local is passed by the time this goes on, I think it's another impact that should be factored in because other people are going to pay us taxes on property tax where we can actually re- reimburse. These guys don't. And maybe that's something that should be looked at as well.
Can you actually go ahead and send all the commissioners the mobility fee schedule? Who pays what and who doesn't pay anything?
Yes, actually, you can find it on, I'll send it to you all.
Yeah.
Uh, but it is online, and I can, I can send it to you.
Yeah.
And as far as the multifamily piece, um, right now, there is no incentive being applied to multifamily. It's the straight cost on mobility fees. It's, it hits, hun- they pay 100% mobility fee today, this year.
And, um, hotels have a, a reduction? There's, it's zero for industrial?
Those are the preferred land uses. Right, there's a certain set of preferred land uses where the mobility fee is currently set at $0. It's 100% subsidized.
So I, I just think we need to look at everything. We need to see what we're getting and see the cost of the roads we need and figure out if we're doing the right thing. Because we, we, people need to, are going to be, in, in 10 years, we need more roads. I mean, we just flat need more roads. So we need to be, be sure that we're building our road network like we need to. Who are you looking at?
I am, I would just want to ask a quick question to David Tocson, really quick on the side.
Well, while he does it, Madam Chair, we'll come in and vote apartments. Something I want to make sure, and I've tied the conversation with staff, and I think they agree, but from here on through with all the apartments, we want to make sure we have our park requirements fully set up.
Yep.
We want to make sure we have all our, minimized advantages. What's that?
Did you see in the Senate bill that's proposed, they can have 20% less parking? I mean, they, they don't even have to have one parking space per unit.
So park, park, parking is an issue.
I know there's discussion being had on that issue.
Yeah. And it's tough with sunshine. We don't, we don't know what these conversations are, but literally, we don't want to give a single break to these things. We've got a park ordinance in place, it's going to be fulfilled.
Right.
Whatever we have in the Land Development Code, buffers, et cetera, just no slack whatsoever.
And up to 10 stories.
And up, another thing to your, um, less parking, then we also, I, I'd love to tackle another day, but predatory towing, because what these people do is they walk up and down the aisles. So these people in the townhouses and the apartments, if they have someone visiting and they don't have a sticker, they tow them right away.
Well, they won't have any visitors because they won't be parking for, uh, if, if live local goes through. Yeah?
Just to reiterate what Terry said, um, we are charging apartments the maximum we can currently charge. Now, as part of our mobility fee update, we are going to be looking at cost increases. To the extent we have cost increases, we will make sure we're passing those on to the apartments just like we would any other use. But you, we can continue to charge apartments the maximum possible.
That's a given.
Just got to make sure that.
That's a given. I just, I just want to make, I just want to make sure that whatever studies you're using are legit because literally the traffic we have out there from these apartments is breaking down our roads.
Um, I have a question on.
It is based on the latest IT trip generation, so we will make sure that it's all, that's why we do an update every four years is to make sure we're capturing all those costs and increases in traffic.
A, a question on if, um, these come in and they're off the tax rules? Um, are they, so are they off the tax rules for property tax? But are they still on the tax rules for tangible tax?
Um, it's, it's, I believe so, it's.
That's something we need to find out.
So I want to be clear, we don't currently have any live local projects that are off the tax rules.
No, but.
The first two.
Talk about what's coming.
The first two that were applied for were denied by the property preserver. Um, and then we opted out after that. So as long as we continue to opt out, and are eligible to opt out, it would not become.
But I think they're taking that away.
They, as of right now, it is, there is no opt-out.
Yeah, they're taking that away.
So I, I don't even think it's on the table. The House is hearing.
So I think we're talking about two different issues. Um, the op, the, the bill that would eliminate our ability to opt out, my understanding from Ralph is not moving. The other bill that, that makes the land use preemption worse is moving and has gone through the Senate. And I don't know where it is in the House. I can get Ralph up here and he can help us out with that. But there was two different bills. One was going to limit our opt-out, the other was going to limit what we do on land use.
Okay.
Only one of those is moving.
So we still may be able to opt out?
Understanding, and Ralph.
Yeah, it's my, my understanding, yeah, our understanding is, is that an opt-out provision will still be allowed.
That's not what I heard yesterday.
That's, that's brand new today.
Oh, brand new today?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. Oh, I, I, I got a call on Mr. Albretton, so.
Well, if, if, if the bill that hurts us on the opt-out is moving, somebody needs to tell me that because that's, that would be news to me.
That was literally.
Okay.
Well, we'll, we'll have, since we're talking about it.
Okay.
That's good.
All right. Um, yes, please mail the, uh, the current mobility fee, the way it breaks out to everybody for their knowledge. And anything else?
That's it.
Okay, very good.
Okay, last item. So before you is a memorandum, uh, from myself regarding invocations at the Board of County Commissioner meetings. Um, there's been a little bit of a paper shuffle here, so I would like to, if I could, just kind of, uh, read, read through a couple of these verbatim. Um, so at your, uh, January board meeting, the board discussed potential alternatives to the current invocation. So both the county attorney's office and county administration have researched the matter and recommend one of the following. And there'll be some sub options with this too, but these are for your consideration. Option one is to update and modernize the invocation to a form that stays within the framework of existing laws following the process that the county has traditionally used. That would basically update the existing prayer.
And I have one to suggest.
Well, and then, and I, there, there are attached to this a couple of just generic versions that an internet search can drum up, uh, in no means preferring one, preferring one over the other, but they're.
We do not have any attached.
You should. You just have the cover memo.
I, there was nothing attached to it.
It was on the desk.
Okay.
The supporting documents also show what other counties and other municipalities jurisdictions do just based on an informal survey, phone calls, and searches that we've been able to do. Second option would be to direct county administration to institute an administrative process to objectively schedule external officiants to provide the invocation. Now, this does open the door to interfaith officiants and is legally defensible. Now alternatively, the county administrator could rotate official chaplains from the Public Safety Branch to provide an appropriate or relevant invocation. Option three would be, um, institute a moment of silence for personal prayer reflection with perhaps an opening statement to focus on a specific matter or current event. For example, ask wisdom as we discuss the county budget, budget and/or pray for persons recently affected by natural disaster. Alternatively, the board could ask each member to also provide an, an, an invocation. Uh, local governments violate the Constitution if they organize and conduct their prayers in a way that discriminates against other religious beliefs. Invocations may not denigrate non-believers or religious minorities, threaten damnation, or preach, uh, conversion. Uh, and so as I mentioned before, that being said, we did poll other jurisdictions. You can see what other jurisdictions do. Um, and it, it varies, it varies widely. And, um, at this point, it's, it's really the, uh, this is board policy and how well it wants to conduct its meetings. So at this point, we'll answer questions if necessary.
I, I'm for either the, that one of the prayers, I've read them, they're fine, or either our public's, you know, somebody, one of our chaplains is doing the prayer. I'm for either of those.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I like what Pinellas County does, and I'll say, I'll throw another one, Regional Planning Council. Uh, there's like 22 member governments. It'll kind of like make, kind of rotate it between all the, uh, members that, that want to do it. It's worked fine, just because someone gets up, stands up, says a prayer, and away they go. Um, I like Pinellas County because it gives the invocation themselves as commissioners, or they can invite, and if they choose to, they can invite a county chaplain in, and I think if you add it to another speaker, so be it. And then that the individual commissioner for that week can decide how he wants to handle himself and just rotate it between us all of us. Quick, simple, easy, no bureaucratic things, and no, no one's going to be able to challenge that either.
Yes, they will.
Yeah.
That's the, the.
Know successfully.
Well, the, the, so I don't, I don't know what Pinellas's background is, but if you adopt that pr- process, the recommendation is going to be, you're going to have to have a outline of how you're getting those, those pastors. The, the, the case that Brevard County lost in 2019 was exactly that fact scenario where they only invited in pastors from certain churches within the county, and that's what got them in trouble. So I'm, that's what the 11th Circuit, that's the law for, for our jurisdiction.
I, I have one I'm going to suggest to us that I think is pretty good, but I'll wait, a new prayer. But do you got, have anything to say? You want to hear mine that I got on? Okay. I kind of like this, because it is time to ref- refresh what we say, and, um, I think this. this kind of speaks more to what we do here. So, it's, it says, "Gracious God, we invite you into our discussions today, unite our hearts, and guide our conversations with wisdom and patience." See, I needed that today. "Help us to seek solutions that honor you and benefit everyone involved."
I love it.
I like it too, I think it centers us before we start.
It'll become, it's good, but it loses its feeling after a while, it'll become...
Well, we can change it again.
Like it is now. I like the idea of rotating our official chaplains, from our different, our different branches. They're in touch with the hardships that our employees are going through, with their family, whether it's good or bad, really, and they see what's going on with the citizenry, especially the ones that are struggling, if they're in our jail, or they show up to, to, you know, different, different functions. I just feel like they're a good extension of board members being out in the public, but they're focused on what they're focused on. And I think that they could help speak to the day, or even the national issues that are going on, and be able to, to hone in on what we need to pray for as a board, and as, as a, as a county. So, I like, I like that option. And then I'm also, an option of rotating board members, or picking a board, board chaplain, similar to what Commissioner Mariano was talking about, but it's time to freshen it up and make it, make it human again.
And Commissioner Oakley, do you want someone to come here? My, my concern about having someone come here is that we barely fit in our morning meetings, the time, and so, you know, I'm, I'm okay with kind of continuing on with the time we've allotted, but freshening up what we say, if we need another sentence on this, I'm all ears, or if we want to pick one, but for me, bringing someone else in, it's, it's, it's gonna be like, we barely get through what we got, so...
If they're not here on time, maybe, you know, in a week, then we need a backup, like you said.
Yeah, I think I'd be fine with one of our chaplains, and either the fire department, even under the sheriff's, even if he's got a chaplain, so I think those are...
Does the sheriff have a chaplain?
Oh, yeah.
He does, or doesn't?
He does, oh, yeah, he does.
Madam Chair, so back to Pinellas, without my adding more speakers on, if you go with the commissioners alternate between giving the invocation themselves, and inviting county chaplains. If they choose to use the prayer that you liked, with someone else got another prayer they want to use, they can use it, which is, incorporate that.
Can I add something?
Yes.
So, if, however we, we go, however we decide, that if the person is not here on time, that we have a different prayer that we say, so we run on time.
Okay.
Like your prayer.
And I used to go to the Catholic church, and now I go to a Presbyterian church, and some prayers can be very lengthy, so if we're gonna be bringing someone in, I'd like to hold, you know, ask them to hold it to a certain time period, because I think we need some boundaries.
We can manage that.
And, again, I think it needs to be a non-denominational...
Yeah.
Method. Yes, it needs to... God, stick with God, and not alienate members of our community that, that are in various religions.
Madam Chair, are you saying, are one of our chaplains doing this now?
Yeah, it's gotta be not...
Not, not like outside religious folks, just our chaplains?
You're not gonna be able to, if, the only way you'd be able to, to sort of write the script is if it's our people. If, once you, once you go outside, you have to...
I just want to be sure, for clarity, we're talking about our chaplains?
Yes.
Talking about the sheriff's chaplains, or the fire department's?
I'm hearing fire or corrections chaplains, which, and if we need to, but I mean, we have several chaplains, we can, we can obviously, commissioner, control the amount of time, and of course, keep, try, you know, make sure that these things stay within the boundaries of...
So, I'm good with...
Like one minute.
So, are we rotating with the commissioners to make that call as we go? Or do you just want to have it...
No, just have them on a rotating, yeah, just have them.
All right.
Who knows, then you don't have to schedule that.
I'm good, I'm good with that, that's good, okay.
And also add the backup prayer, in case they're running late.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll adopt, so chaplains from public safety?
Yep.
And we'll, we'll schedule them as effective four-twenty-two, we can start with that, and then if they fail to show, which they won't, but anyway, if they do...
No, I'm saying, what if they're running late, or they're stuck in traffic?
Does the board want to adopt Commissioner Starkey's invocation as, as the new...
I'm fine with that.
...as the backup form?
I like, I liked it, yeah. I think it kind of gets your...
I agree. Do we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, I make a motion that we have fire safety, public safety chaplain come do the prayer, and if for some reason that they cannot make it, that we will use Commissioner Starkey's prayer, effective four-twenty-two.
Well, it's the internet's prayer, I got it off there.
Hey, I already did prayer, Commissioner Starkey?
We have a second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right. Thank you, ma'am, I'm done.
Okay, Madam Clerk, O'County Attorney? God, it's like a ping pong.
Just want to remind you, and I don't know whether you want me to intervene, or, but, but public, the public comment section is not designed for open comment, it's designed for items to be placed on the agenda, or, or to speak about things for the agenda for the day. As I've always said to you all, my concern is, when you let it get broader than what you can say grace over, or...
You're talking about our public comment amongst the...
Public comment, in the beginning of the day. The citizen public comment.
Okay.
It just needs to be, it needs to stay within the parameters of what you're gonna be placing on an agenda, or is what already is on an agenda, something that you can take action on.
So, you're speaking to the religious comments this morning?
Doesn't have to be religious, but that's...
I mean, the ones this morning, that was kind of out of bounds?
But, they went in, they went out.
Yeah, I didn't know what to do on that one, so...
So, I just, it's just something to be, to keep in mind, for the board to keep in mind, you don't want that to become open forum, because then it's everything, the stuff that you don't like to do, will be open forum as well. That's...
If someone starts straying, just kick me right here.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go through my list really fast. Oh, you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, get out of here.
I really have a quick, I have a quick update.
You've got a long list.
I'm really proud of it. I mentioned during the last meeting that our office was holding an event called Operation Green Line, to help individuals that have suspended driver's license from traffic and criminal cases, where they have not completed their court financial obligation. The event was held March twenty-seventh and ended on April third, and I find it to be very successful. My office waived over a hundred and four thousand dollars to help individuals get their licenses back, and it impacted nine hundred and twenty-one individuals, so very proud of that.
That's very awesome.
Thank you.
Great job.
I am done.
Okay, let's roll through mine as fast as we can. So, I was honored by the Girl Scouts of West Central Florida, with this woman of distinction luncheon, I had my family fly in, and we had a sold-out room there in Armory Works, and it was a real honor to be, to have that distinction.
Congratulations.
And we want to have more Pasco people honored there. Then, we attended FAC for Tallahassee, for FAC, and making the rounds. Thank you to all our legislators who saw us. I thought your husband did a wonderful job. And that was fun, I look forward to that again next year. My staff attended the Station Three ribbon cutting, there it is, and, okay, I have a short video from the Sports and Events Europe meeting that I went to with tourism. I gotta say, I see why they're sponsoring it, it was amazing. I spoke to about four hundred and fifty people, here's, here's their, this is what they showed at the event. This is why they have the Davis Cup, by the way.
First, it's very important since we are bringing into the city the key players of the sports industry around Europe, and during several days, we are all together here, they can experience the city, they can street drive by, and it will play out with our city.
Over fourteen incredible days, two hundred and three buyers from tour operators, event organizers, and a hundred and ninety supplier companies, such as sports destinations and hospitality services, met and connected to do business in a dynamic and energetic environment. Over four thousand five hundred buyers, supplier meetings, when numbers speak for themselves. Five thousand and fifty-nine leads were generated, and seven thousand seven hundred and forty-nine messages exchanged. Sixteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven interactions by the app. And it doesn't stop here, the app will remember, the connections alive over following weeks.
We're creating demand on both sides of the table, and during those conversations, we can tell what that demand is, and if there's a need to be fulfilled. The meetings have been very lucrative, and, and very, very advantageous for us, they keep coming back, and building relationships over and over and over again. So, the quality of meetings here, again, is not much.
Beyond business, events will back creative unforgettable experiences together, and fostering deep connections, from brilliant sports activities, exploring values, rich culture, everyone's in the fun. Sports and Events Europe team has already started to work on the next edition, which will be held in Supple in March twenty-twenty-six.
We have already chosen a destination for next year, we want to make an event, sponsor event, reach even more markets and players for the event, and I cannot tell you how happy we are that we are going to host Sports and Events Europe twenty-twenty-six in a city that is famous because it's the rolling capital of Europe.
The next edition, and it will bring opportunities and connections, see you in Supple.
So, that thing on the top there, it had a fifteen-minute timer, and every fifteen minutes, it was like speed dating. I mean, it was, it was fast and furious, and sometimes there were two of us, sometimes there was one, there was another gentleman that used to be with the Florida Sports Foundation, helping out, because there's no, you could get to every table. Tony, I just sent you an email, I don't know if you can throw that on there, but, because on the, they had a time when you went out and, and did something, and I did this hike, which used to be the world's most dangerous hike, if you can put that up. If you can't, that's okay. Anyway, really good for, for us, we're the only Americans there, and a bunch of these people will be coming to Saddle Brook. Oh, one of the, one of the relationships that I'm hoping to build on is a Brazilian company that puts on mountain bike duathlons, so you bike and you run, there's no swim, and they're from Brazil. And I said, oh, and we have BadooCo. And they're like, well, we know BadooCo. So, I said, let's work on a relationship between BadooCo and this company, and do, you know, a Brazilian event here, sponsoring a bike race, so I'm real excited, they're gonna be here, I guess, next week, in two weeks. Okay, Texas Roadhouse ribbon cutting, we've got our Texas Roadhouse open there on, on State Road fifty-four. They had something like twelve hundred people respond to their requests for work, they hired two hundred, but I thought that was pretty impressive, twelve hundred people applied.
What is this restaurant?
It's in front of Starkey Ranch.
It's what?
Starkey Ranch.
Texas Roadhouse.
Texas Roadhouse, yeah. It's really nice, nicely done, and they...
Great, great place.
Huh?
Great place.
Yeah, I, I, I haven't had time to go in, I mean, I walked around it, but they were just opening when I did this, so...
They've been in Weston Chapel's for a long time.
Oh, nice, huh?
Weston Chapel's had a Roadhouse.
Oh, they don't throw the peanuts on the floor anymore, which I, I asked, but they don't do that anymore. Then I participated with Mike Carbala and Turner on the ULI Tour of Pasco. We started at the hub, and we went through Starkey Ranch, through Longleaf, up through Angeline and Spiros, and back down through the county, and I'm trying to remember where else we went. Went to Marada, we went to Marada.
Sure did, yeah.
And that was my first time at that lagoon there, it was very nice, and there were a lot more people on the bus, that's not showing all the people on the bus. So, it was hot, though, gosh, this, thank goodness for this road, I mean, this weather. All right, I did the Simmons Academy Welcome, I went to Netfest, I don't think I took any pictures, attended the, the Pasco County Fire graduation that Commissioner Oakley showed you pictures of. I was also at the X, Gen X ribbon cutting, that gentleman's gonna come to the AMSKILLS boot camp graduation next Friday. If you haven't been to, to one of those next Friday, please come. All right, as of April first, the Solid Waste Team is, has implemented a glass drop-off recycling pilot program. There are four drop-off locations. We have West Pasco Resource Recovery, East Pasco Transfer Station, Ankleo Citizen Drop-Off, and Landa Lakes. So, drop-off, so...
That was on April first?
Yeah, so if you have...
Was it April Fool's Day?
You have to, I don't know what that is, you have to bring your own glass to these recycle places, that's how we're starting on, and PAWS is gonna, remember that machine we talked about? They're gonna chop it up, and the county's gonna work on, I think, using that, that glass can be used in road base and all kinds of stuff. Well, we don't have the machine that goes to sand, that's something that we can talk about, but we're starting with this, I don't know, hopefully I'm saying this all right with utilities, but...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a no cost right now, this is, as long as it operates in the green, it's something that we're willing to pilot and try.
Yeah.
Because glass right now weighs too much, that's why we removed it from the recycling stream, and it, there's not a lot of economic sense. To the point that it makes economic sense, you know, we'll, we'll continue that. I know there's other opportunities out there that exist, but again, we explore those on occasion.
I'd, I'd like to see more drop-off places for bottles, for bottles, but...
It, it just, honestly, it really comes down, hauling it is expensive, because it's heavy, and, and right now, I think self-drop-off is the way, it's not something...
No, I'm okay with self-drop-off, I just wonder if there could be one or two more locations?
I would not support this. Glass is a, is in the recycled commodities market nationwide, glass has been exited out of streams of cities and counties and states all across this country. Glass costs an incredible amount of money to process, to recycle, there's no return. Sand's an infinite resource, it takes more energy to break down and melt glass than to make new bottles. When you sort glass, you have to sort it by color, you can't combing it, you have to make the greens go to greens, the browns go to browns, then you have to baby-find the end user. It's not, it's not a profitable endeavor for a government, it's not a profitable endeavor for private sector. So, it's very, if this thing loses a penny, my expectation would be, okay, we tried and we shut it down, because it's, it's not...
Commissioner Wademan is, is spot-on, that's why we removed it from the stream to begin with. Again, there's plenty of sand on the planet, I, I think we're taught early on, it was one of those earlier things, it's kind of a legacy recycling thing, I mean, I won't get into that, but, you know, some of these companies, you know, those communities that do it just to do it, and then these types of things work. But we'll, we're willing to pilot, right now the numbers pan out, and as long as they continue to pencil out, then we think that's an okay, okay deal, but if they don't, then we're gonna have to...
Well, I want every commissioner to have the map, and my staff can send it to you, of the drop-off sites, and you can, you know, share the news.
To share, I mean, I've shared this before, but Pasco County's commodities is some of the cleanest commodity in the state of Florida, and that's something to be very proud of. Adding glass to the stream would just, it would be, it would destroy the program.
No, no, I don't want to add it to, we have a, someone, we would, we're giving it to PAWS. I just wanted to have easier drop-off places for them to get to PAWS.
Remember, the, the cost of hauling?
It's going to fifty-four, and it's going to fifty-two.
It's not an inexpensive endeavor.
Yeah, and so, that, and that's, the commissioner's point's well-taken, because if you distribute out, and you make it easier for the consumer, then there's costs associated with that, and then that may not, then it may not pro forma out the way that we intended to. then there's costs associated with that and then that may not, then it may not pro forma out the way that we intended to. So, let's just see how this small pilot works before we look at.
Commissioner Mariana.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the economics of it all, Commissioner Waitman, I'll trust your professional opinion, because.
I know something about this.
And it's why.
It's not, it's not going to, to our waste center, to say.
And it's why we dropped it before. So even if you try to encourage it more, if you get someone driving ten minutes here, fifteen minutes, you, you're actually wasting more energy and they're actually hurting you by money helping anyway.
Well, that's why I was thinking if they were more, uh, every time I put a bottle in the garbage, it bothers me. It just bothers me.
It's called, you have, you have the case of, uh, it's called wish cycling in the business, where you recycle on feelings. You, oh, I wanna recycle this, well, golf club might be metal, but it's not necessarily fits in that bucket or a road, or a, you know, you name it, wish cycling. It's, when you start contaminating loads, it becomes, uh, counterproductive in the endeavor and ends up just costing and it goes to the burn facility or landfill anyway when contamination rates get too high. And that's an issue with any drop-off site, is the level of contamination, because people just.
And that's exactly why we stopped it, we've been getting so much cross-contamination with the recycling stream, we hadn't ended.
I don't think, uh, PAWS not sorting out the colored glasses, because they're making a little, it's a little chunky piece of glass that goes in road case.
But what they're saying is, they may throw all the things in those drop-off sites.
Yeah, so, but, so don't put glass in your recycling now, if you wanna recycle, you gotta drop glass, you gotta drop it all at the sites. Okay, um, you know, we're working on the Tree Mitigation Fund and, um, I'd like to discuss, um, adding not-for-profit organizations to be able to receive trees from the Tree Mitigation Trust Fund. You know, I worked on that, the beginning of that, when I sat on pork Citizens Ordinance Review Committee, long before I was ever even a school board member, in the early two thousands, maybe late nineteen nineties. And the whole intent of that was to put the trees back out into the community. And we're not doing a good job of it and I would, you know, someone told me that we give, pay, pay for the trees on the school, for the school district. I don't know if that was confirmed, but I think my staff is the one that told me that. So, uh, anyway, as we're working to rewrite it, um, definitely wanna add nonprofits like Metropolitan Ministries or, you know, whomever.
Yes, ma'am, I was just talking with David Engel, you know, we, we, we went back to the drawing board on the cost of tree removal with, with the private development community, I think we're, we're close now on something that will go through the process. And then as a complimentary process to that will be use of rewriting the appropriate use of those funds. So we'll, we'll take that input now, but it'll obviously be coming back to the board, uh, in the next, you know, maybe a few cycles here where we will have a discussion publicly and add or subtract any things.
I mean, I, yeah, so I, I'm not even sure, our Parks Department uses our Tree Mitigation Trust Fund. From what Keith told me, he's, has not been able to access it, to put in the trees in our parks.
Well, we're, it's restrictive.
So I don't know who's using it, nobody.
We're using dollars from the development community that they're paying and so there's, there's input in that, so, David, think of that.
Uh, Madam Chair and Board, we are expediting the fee increases because we haven't increased our tree mitigation fees for decades.
Ever.
And, and secondly, uh, we're gonna broaden the net of use of funds. Commissioner Starkey, thank you for suggesting around, regarding not-for-profits. But we wanna make sure that our public parks have access to that, those funds. And, uh, that will be very quickly in front of you, we're gonna do it in the form of an authorization resolution.
It's, public parks are public right-of-ways along the roads.
Yes, ma'am.
Along trails, so we can shade them, I mean, we have a lot of uses for them and I've gotta get that money back, you know, we've gotta get the trees in.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
And I, and I agree a hundred percent, the nonprofits like this one, a little road that, um, some of those members have come to me on. And they tried to get trees around, it's like a bare bones place, like it should be. But if we've got the Tree Mitigation Fund money, it was supposed to put the trees out there. We need to make it so that every one of those, even if already built, they can go in and do that. As far as the parks, it should be really easy for the parks.
I know it.
It should be part of everybody, every, every building we should build should be using that fund.
Agreed, agreed, including our government center in West Pasco. We're not even up to our own code in our parking lot. Um, okay, um, you're, this is gonna be a shocker, but on the fence ordinance, um, you know, we've, we've had some instances where, uh, when, uh, when you have a vacant commercial property, I don't know, I'm not sure if I wanna open this Pandora's box, but, um, vacant commercial property, and maybe we want the person to secure the property some, temporarily. This would be only temporarily, and if you mess it up, there's gonna be a price to pay. Um, they can put a chain-link fence temporarily around their property until they develop it and then the, the chain-link fence on our major roads has to go away. But we have some, you know, they don't, they don't wanna go to the expense of, of, well, first of all, I wanna just kinda get rid of vinyl fences personally, commercially. Um, we put, Walmart went and put that vinyl fence around their property on Grand at Fifty-four, um, and it's been a disaster for them. And the, the homeless people and the people in the strip club, they just break the fence, they're, I'm sure they're back living in there. Um, if it was a chain-link fence, it would've kept people from living in there while it's vacant, so.
Chain-link won't stop them, they made my district, they, they broke down chain-link ten-foot tall.
Well, that's true, too, I don't know what the answer is, we need more officers, more, all right. Um, okay, I want, I also, I wanna bring back up that I'm very interested in a public safety impact fee. I've mentioned this, the sheriff a couple of times, we talked about it, he and I in our, our meeting. It could've paid, it could pay for those helicopters, he says the, the penny for Pasco is not covering the cost of what they need for trucks and, you know, new equipment and radios and all that. And I, I think we've really missed the boat, not having a public safety impact fee, so.
So does the board wanna direct us to begin, so let me just.
At least, I know we have to do a study.
Well, yes, we do, um, I, I think, I'm looking at Jeff. Yeah, we do have to do a study.
Yes, you do.
So, um, I will say this, uh, in our discussions, at least with the TBVA, you know, we've kind of informally looking at trying to do one impact fee increase or paying per year, right, and so looking at that. And so right now, we'll have the impact fee for the fire department coming before you soon, uh, to have, have that discussion because that's been, been rather antiquated. You saw here from Terry's presentation that mobility fees will be, will be next, you have to come into effect at the end of next year. And then, you know, we haven't looked at utility impact fees in a while, you know, there's discussion on library impact fees. So, again, I'll, I'll just want some guidance from the board, if we want to really entertain a overall public safety impact fee, we could probably merge fire and things into that, but then it'll, allocation will become a problem.
No.
And Jeff's shaking his head at me that we.
You've already, yeah, you wanna continue with the, you're almost across the finish line with fire.
Right.
You don't wanna add other branches in that right now.
No, no, I, I wouldn't, I, I would say this would have to be.
You might be able to combine corrections with the sheriff as a public safety function, but I wouldn't.
No, I don't wanna mess with the, the fire one that's coming forward, that's been in the works for almost a year, so we wanna bring that before the board. But this would be a future, a future idea, and of course, if the board wants us to embark on a study, they take about six months to get those going and just to make sure that everything's copacetic with that. And some of the things with sheriff, it'll be for new growth, not necessarily existing growth, or, I'm sorry, or, or replacement. I, for example, helicopters, I'm not so sure, you know, that you could necessarily make adjustments.
If it, if it's in the fee, if it's in the study, that that's what you're charging them for and it's not paying for a deficit in service that you've already got, things like a helicopter would, would work, but it would have to be a new helicopter and not.
Would have to be a new helicopter, but I'm replacing, I'm replacing four with two in this case, and so I just.
Knew that he doesn't have one.
My point is, my point is, is that it takes time and it has to be studied and looked at and, and looked at and then. But if the board wants us to embark on that, I'll, I'll take direction, but.
Well, I, I think we should, but, I mean, I think it would be small to start, but at least we get something.
We need to take an overarching look at impact fees, we have some of the highest impact fees around. So if it needs restructuring, word of the year, open to take a look at it and.
So I'm hearing Commissioner Waitman, and maybe, maybe the compromise here is as we, we bring forward a workshop item where we can look comprehensively at impact fees and then allow the board to have a fluid conversation on, you know, the, the entire piece to, to the commissioner's point, I'm sure it's tens of thousands of dollars on the new single-family home, including school board. So, okay.
Yeah, and, but, you know, um, and are, we are gonna discuss publicly the lack of utilities on State Road fifty-two? Are we gonna say that, we'll say that for another meeting?
We're working that as a private deal with developers right now.
Okay, well, I, I need to understand how that's gonna work for the large property owners and the small property owners, who may not be paying into that.
As we get that deal, as we get that baked, we'll, we'll be sure to be briefing board members before we bring it forward.
Okay.
So, question, I would love to bring, or comment, I would love to bring up, um, having boat trailers allowed to be parked in the driveway. Um, it has a tag and it is registered and you can move it. So I think it would deter people from parking it in their yards and we are a coastal community and it's very expensive to pay for boat storage.
Okay, not allowed to do that now?
Nope.
Not in my neighborhood, neither one of my neighbor, both my neighborhoods have HOA restrictions against it.
Is that a motion?
Yes, but I, I, I don't, I would love to make that a priority where we could.
Uh, yeah, I don't know what code that falls under.
It would, it's the land development code, it's, you're not allowed to have it in the front yard set back.
No, it could be on the side yard.
In the, in the front yard set back.
Yeah.
So, which is pretty much the whole driveway unless you've got a long driveway.
I mean, that, this also goes along with the parking issues. If you put a boat trailer in the driveway, then you don't have a car in the driveway, then you have a car in the street.
If, 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 you might have a car in the garage.
Yeah.
Oh, not in Florida, you're not.
I know, what I'm saying is though, if it has it, you could pick, like, okay, I have, I have my boat.
My, yeah, my, my point was that the way the parking ratios are structured in our code, that is one of your designated parking spaces is the driveway. So you theoretically, if you're putting a boat in it, you're one, one car short.
You can now, um, put a boat trailer on the side of your house, as long as it's not sticking out the front, is that right? Yeah, so you can have a boat trailer, just, um, I really have to go, I'm, I can, I gotta go. I was supposed to pick something up at three forty-five.
Madam Chair?
This is supposed to be. Oh, yeah, go ahead, we'll, we'll come back. Go, go, Jack.
Just gotta flip through, this is the picture of Sun West Park, the new trailer.
Oh, is that what that is? Okay, they put that under mine.
Your motion? All right, so anyway.
Is there any shade on it?
That's an example, goes all the way around, yes.
I know where you can get some money for shade, shade trees.
All right, and, uh, just a quick thing, Commissioner Yeager, I, I'd like Commissioner Yeager's thing to be brought back to the commission to go take a look at it, especially as you bring up a registered boat trailer.
Has a tag, registered.
With boat owner, they're not supposed to be able to go.
And, and let's have code here and, you know, someone from planning that shows how that works. Okay, we're adjourned.